All right, it is six thirty. We have called a meeting to order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and in Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call all present. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Consent agenda. Anything there of correction or anything? No? Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items as noted.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda pass. Any requests or presentations? Hearing none. We're on to departments. Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning. We have ordinance two oh two amending section seven point eight fence regulations.
We have a motion on the ordinance regarding fence regulations. Are any clarifications needed? I'll make the motion to approve. You have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
And we have authorizing rezoning of parcels listed in resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. That's the next item down on the agenda.
And these are in regards to, I guess we'd call the Motley School site. Just moving it into the zone that we believe we would have to change it into anyways pending any sale offers. Motion to approve the resolution regarding revising the zones of two zero two three dash zero nine.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion carries.
That's all I have at this point, but some of your questions and concerns.
Was that for authorizing the rezoning or for the resolution summarizing it?
Well, technically I skipped authorizing and write the resolution. Do you want us to go back on authorize or you want us to resolve? Okay. Motion to authorize the resolution.
Authorizing the rezoning.
Authorizing the rezoning of parcels. All, motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made. Second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We are authorized and we are resolute it. Any comments, concerns, or other business brought forward by planning and zoning?
I have none.
Neither do I. Anybody else? Fire department.
Calls for March for three medicals, two good and ten, three fires for a total of eight. And then number two, the Minnesota DNR has opened up their grant application. It is a ten thousand dollar fifty fifty grant. We can apply for this every year, and I'd just like to get approval to apply for it again this year.
I will make that motion to apply.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Apply.
That's all I have.
Police department.
Police reports on page twenty to twenty-two. Total of ninety-five calls for the month of March. Bring us up to two hundred and thirty-seven. You can see the breakdown of the calls there. If anybody has any questions on it.
Point of clarification, in your report this month, you submitted the drugs weapons confiscated. Is that throughout the month?
That's just for the month of March.
That wasn't one stop?
Not one stop. Multiple stops, but that was just for this month.
Any questions, comments on Chief's report before I move on? Hearing none. Squad car.
Squad car. So I had gotten a request to create a packet with all the quotes for everything, which I put in everybody's mailbox. Looks like everybody's got that. So, everything broken down there. Pretty much the same price. It might be just a few dollars off from the last one I gave last month, and that's just because of the miscellaneous equipment. There's still more items I'd probably end up purchasing just out of my general budget. But that gives a pretty solid breakdown.
Questions or comments? Chief.
Well, I don't know where to start.
Okay.
It just I don't think, what I'm saying is what I said at the last meeting. I just don't think we need it at all. I think if we could find a used one, that would be great. We've been just fine for over twenty years without it. If you look at these fifteen, twenty pages each, just money, 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 money. And then there's parking and the next thing. People will want to bring it home, and that'll add to. I just don't think we need it. Just something to ponder. Like Bruce, he's, it's not in his DNA at all, but if he would want a second vehicle for his department. Again, just something might happen with a plow or something where you can't snow plow. I think he'd kind of put that in the same, just something to think about to her. I don't think it's necessary at all. It's just a lot, a lot of money for the taxpayers. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I have a question because I wasn't here in March and I was reading the past minutes and looking over everything. So I came up with a couple of questions. So it said that most of the funds were available in the budget.
Correct.
So that is that second page here.
Correct.
So projected is about eighty-three thousand for January two thousand twenty-four.
Correct.
And is there still looking into grants or Sourcewell funds?
Yep. So there's a Sourcewell grant that we can apply for. It's up to, it's somewhere between twenty to fifty thousand is the award amounts that they award.
Twenty to fifty?
Yeah. Sourcewell has stated that typically most cities receive anywhere between thirty and forty thousand. Not saying we can't get fifty and not saying we can't get twenty. But the general average is thirty to forty thousand that they award to each city for this.
So is this designated somewhere in your budget or is this just stuff, everything is rolled over from previous years?
So the second page, that's my four oh one fund for purchasing equipment and new squad cars.
Four oh one fund you call it?
Yeah. That fund is specific just for purchasing squad cars and equipment.
Yeah, the four oh one fund is, it's the capital improvement fund. The fund is four oh one. But it's its own thing for all the capital projects and that's his portion of it.
Police department only.
In that budget. It has everyone's four oh one money in there, but that's specifically Jason's that he showed you.
So the four oh one fund is essentially where we're getting the money for Bruce's truck?
Yep.
Okay.
But it's from a different breakdown.
Right, but it's the same.
Yep, it's the same fund, but.
Every department's own portion.
So your balance right now sits at seventy thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-three cents at the beginning of the month, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, those dollars in addition to, and I would agree with the thirty to forty, that's what Sourcewell told me as well. But let's say low, seventy thousand plus ninety, twenty thousand is ninety thousand. So your budget and a grant more than pays for your ask of the new squad car and to be outfitted appropriately.
Correct.
Okay, so this is a quote for a twenty twenty compared to a twenty twenty-four, about thirty grand?
Yep. So in twenty twenty is when we bought our squad that we currently have. That's a twenty twenty squad. That was just to show the numbers of what we paid back then for that squad.
If we order this car now, when are we going to realistically expect it to be?
If we order this spring, the anticipated delivery date is February to March of two thousand twenty-four. So not until next, about this time next week.
Around a year from now.
Yeah, about eleven months from now.
Okay, so that's approximately when you bought the one you have now, what the cost was?
Correct.
Right, okay, it's not up to date.
When we bought our last one, we paid fifty-seven thousand for it. But there was some equipment that was able to transfer over from the old one into that one. So we didn't have to buy all the new equipment.
And how many times do you feel in the past year were you guys without or needing a backup vehicle or that you had to borrow from another department yet?
Oh, it, it happens every so often. It might not happen every month, but then all of a sudden the next month, it's two, three times where you're down for a day or maybe a couple of days. It's in the shop from the cap repairs or every time it's, you need an oil change, you're down. There's, like I had mentioned before, when I had to do the pit maneuver back in November first, caused some damage to the front bumper and the push bumper on there during that pursuit. So then, once we got the parts and everything, it was in the body shop for a week where we didn't have anything to use at that time.
In the interest of not knowing, if, if you are without a vehicle for days a week, what is the responsibility, liability of the city that you cannot perform your duties as needed and expected?
Well.
We just off the hook for things because we don't have a squad?
Yes, I mean, the county is required to cover the calls, so we can't. But my opinion is it's, I'm assuming that we're still going to get our paycheck even though we don't have a squad to drive in. We sit behind the desk all day looking at our same email.
Not even necessarily your turn, not your time chief. I'm just talking about the people that we serve and that expect us to serve. And counties are spread apart and vehicles and squads are far, far away.
Correct.
And I did continue to make other calls. Around us, there was only one city that asked to just politely keep us out of your public, if you will, but there aren't vehicles to borrow.
Correct.
They just aren't. And I think the difference between Bruce and a plow is very, he has his lane and I think a police vehicle, emergency vehicle, or fire truck are outfitted very different to people in very different vehicles.
Correct. Even, even if we tried to borrow one or Staples would allow us to borrow one, we run into a number of difficulties with that because their radio systems are programmed differently because they're programmed for their county, which is different than Morrison County. Cass County is programmed differently there. Pillager is programmed differently. Their computers are different, so our computer won't dock into their station in the car. So then we're without a computer, we're fumbling around through the radio, and when you're doing that on an emergency call, things can get a little a little unnecessarily unsafe at that point.
And the decision we make tonight, if we want, we have to make a monetary commitment of some kind to a vehicle in order to get the grant dollars.
Correct.
Because the grant expires.
On the twenty-sixth. Has to be submitted by them.
So whether it were new or used, tonight is really the decision of some type of vehicle or we, we don't even worry about the grant.
Correct.
Okay, so we need to decide whether it's new or used, but we don't know how much we're getting from Sourcewell. You said it expires the twenty-sixth?
The grant has to be submitted by the twenty-sixth.
Do you know how long it takes to give?
It is a very simplistic process. They simply need to know what you're purchasing and a commitment to that purchase. And twenty was the real low, but thirty to forty was the, that's their target for, for all the, based on their past data and where they think it's going.
And obviously in the grant, I listed it, I requested the fifty, but.
The current squad.
Yes.
What kind of life expectancy do we have left in it realistically?
Well, if you look at my report, currently we have a little over sixty-two thousand miles on it as of April first. We tend to put on about twenty thousand miles a year between myself and the other officer. So at that pace, you're looking at about two, maybe three years before it needs to be replaced. Which means in two years, you'd have to order one because it takes another whole year to get it. And that puts us pretty high on mileage and hours on the squad. The biggest problem with purchasing used squad cars is you get higher miles and the engine hours on them are very high. So our squad probably has, I would guess probably around four to forty-five hundred hours on it right now at that mileage. Where my wife's car with the same amount of miles probably has two thousand hours. So you've got that much more wear and tear on the engine. Also because of our job, they're used a little bit more roughly at times just because we have to, which is more wear and tear on the vehicle as well. So a lot of these squad cars that go to auction are being sold with that hundred, hundred and twenty thousand mile range and six thousand hours plus. They're pretty worn out. And when I was looking at them on the auction sites and that, they're going for fifteen to seventeen thousand. And that's being sold to private people that are gonna drive them around normally. Not using them for a squad car again. But my best bet is you're gonna be putting more money into it right after you purchase it because it's probably gonna need new brakes. It's probably gonna need some wheel bearings replaced. Probably the struts, those kinds of things. At that mileage and amount of use, that's kind of industry norm.
And insurance wise, it's an additional fifteen hundred and sixty-five a year.
Correct.
And a second year.
Yeah. So it'll be additional fifteen hundred and sixty-five dollars for the insurance. But if it's delivered in, say, February of two thousand twenty-four, we won't have to pay for that insurance the first year, so we won't be charged until January one of two thousand twenty-five for that, for the year two thousand twenty-five. So we're essentially getting about ten months of free insurance.
If I understand it, ordering it now, we could expect delivery like by next March, but there's no guarantee on that delivery.
That's absolutely correct as well because there's, they're only making so many from Chevrolet or GMC. And a lot of, a lot of departments are having troubles getting them. They're ordering five, six of them and they're only getting three, four of them. And they're, they're getting shorted as well. So our best hope is that we order it and we can get it, but we could also be one of those that get shorter to not get one even.
So I just want to add in the, in the efforts to not be biased in this situation, I did seek out comments from the community. Citizens of all age groups, business owners, so on and so forth. And the two biggest things that I heard from everyone was number one, the effort and the appreciation that we're seeking out this grant to help cover the cost. That was one of the biggest things. And then they also felt that in the best interest of serving the city, what we pay them to do to effectively and efficiently serve it, they felt that a second squad was needed.
I guess my thoughts, Jason, are is that, you know, if it's a need, not a want, and the community supports it, okay. But my concern with it is the two thousand twenty-four brand-new Chevy Tahoe and that price tag. Of course, that's, you know, rides on the taxpayers and.
So to be clear though, you have the budget. The tax has already been collected. This isn't an ask.
Correct. I've been budgeting for this and that.
The community has already paid for us to use those funds at our discretion and our allowances based on what department has need. So this isn't a, this isn't a new ask.
Correct.
That grant money and everything can go for something else too. You gotta remember that.
This is, well, yes and no. It's specifically designed, it could go for a vehicle that Bruce could potentially need, but he's not a need of one. So the grant is specific to.
Well, the police department isn't, doesn't need one either.
No, but the grasp terms.
Twenty years without one.
Yeah, the, the grant though is specific towards vehicles and heavy equipment, so.
The grant is designed, it's the Sourcewell Impact Funding Grant. So the grant is designed to be awarded for things that would directly impact and better improve your city. Replacing a vehicle is not necessarily an impact to the community. But adding another additional squad car and that ability to not have the downtime and serve our community better is an impact.
In speaking with Sourcewell, it seemed the trend was vehicles and equipment. It was just to offset the growing cost of vehicles, trucks, skid loaders, all the stuff that don't get any cheaper.
Correct. And the prices are going up and I'm sure next year it'll be thousands higher.
Are skid loaders a piece of shit too?
Don't, didn't know that. Or it hasn't been brought to my attention, so I didn't know that.
One industry. Relaying it. It's dying fast.
And this grant's every year, so if next year we need to buy board for a skid loader, Bruce wants to do the grand.
Is there any concern over depleting your budget by that much and not having anything to work with? Should you need anything the rest of the year? Or I guess that's.
Like I said, that's just for major purchases of the squad car and equipment for the squad car. So everything we currently have in our squad car is up to date, new within the last few years. So we shouldn't need to be dying out there for really much more of anything, so.
Any more discussions, questions? Well, I'm gonna make a motion that the chief police be granted the opportunity to purchase two thousand twenty-four Chevy Tahoe outfitted as presented with the expectation that the Sourcewell grant is applied for, along with his budget to use those funds. That is my motion.
Did you say two thousand twenty or?
Twenty-four. The new, the new squad. Two thou, my motion is for the two thousand twenty-four Chevy Tahoe to be purchased using the funds that he has in addition to the Sourcewell grant.
I'll second that motion, Mike.
We have a motion, we have a second. Would we like a vote on this one or can we hear a yeas and ayes?
I guess I'm not prepared to. I would like to do a little more research, but I don't know. You guys have a motion and a second.
I'll have to bring it to a vote.
Bring it to a vote. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
I'm not opposed to it. I don't know how to word that. I'm, I'm good with that.
You can abstain from voting.
Yeah, I know, right.
So you can call it that if you want.
So is that a three to two in favor of the motion? Motion carries.
So then you also need to pass the resolution too.
The motion for resolution two thousand twenty-three dash ten approving the application for the grant funding. You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public Works Department.
Can I just clarify?
Yep.
Nikki, did you?
Yeah.
You invited, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry.
I was looking down.
Actually, I am. Sorry.
Public Works Department. Bruce.
Sorry.
Slowly gone.
Finally. Page twenty-four is the report. I did have a transducer go goofy at the water plant and I spent thousands bucks on it. I'm gonna take the old one and send it in to get it rebuilt.
Goofy is a technical term. Other times we start checking on the warranty.
Sometimes it would read ten point one, next minute it would be at one point, nothing. And it was all over the place. So it was locking up the water plant so it couldn't continue the backwash and flooded the filters a couple of times. We just had to do it.
So you think it's under warranty is what you're saying?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you said you'll check the warranty. Sorry.
No, I'm gonna send the other one and get it rebuilt so we have a spare.
Gotcha.
If it happens again, but they sent it up to four fifty, it probably won't be that much, but just in case I wanted to go take it. So you know about it anyway. And then hopefully we'll be closing hydrants at the end of the month somewhere. Sometime frost and everything goes out and the water goes down, so we'll be good there. You'll see in the wastewater, I got a little blurb about that down there. Sometime after I went on vacation, right in that time period or shortly after, based on the calculations, the pond volume and stuff, something happened down there that disrupted them big time. The oxygen levels dropped, the phosphorus levels went way spiked, and it took a couple of weeks after I got back to finally get it under control and get it straightened out. But don't know what it was or where it came from. There's no way of proving it. It's most likely a low pH or a cleaning product of some sort. It did, the ponds when I got back did look white-ish, kind of odd color. Normally the bugs are kind of a brownish color. So we had to turn up the blowers and everything to get more oxygen back in there and get things rolling. So we had to turn up the blowers and everything to get more oxygen back in there and get things rolling again. But something happened, but it's back to normal now, so, but just so you know about that.
Just out of curiosity, Bruce, when something like that happens, can you, um, can you see where it's coming from? Like what part of the city?
Well, not when you're on vacation.
Oh, no, I know.
But, um...
I'm just curious.
It's from our end over there.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is it Nicky or is it Steve?
In this case, I probably wouldn't be able to because, um, no, by the time you see it in the pond, it's came through two lift stations.
Oh, sure.
And it's probably a slug, it probably wasn't a long-term thing. It was, maybe there was a, a strong cleaning agent or something that got dumped or a new one or something that, who knows, you know?
Sure.
It's, by the time you realize what happened, it's already in the ponds and to track it back is probably, I mean, they're pumping two hundred and thirty thousand a day through there.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to tell where it's, it's all passed through, so it's just...
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I wish, and I'd call the MPCA and the rural water and ask them the same questions. How could I track that? And they said unless you get it on a regular basis, it's pretty tough to, to be able to narrow it down. So it's just kind of, all you can do is do the best you can with it and make the most of it.
Sure.
Try and recover as quick as you can. But, so that's just for informational and then just the charging station is only, is used thirty-five times between the two appointments. That's all I have on that part. Uh, next thing is the user agreement with those water meters. They want us to sign a thing saying we're gonna pay the eight hundred and twenty dollars a year for the life.
That's what all this does, right?
That's all it is, yeah.
I've run through it all, I've got to page thirty-two on it.
Yeah, I think about thirty-six as a summary, but that's what, that's what they need to sign this to, to get, to get the eight hundred and twenty seventy-five a year. And we did order the meters, but we told them we'd come to you guys for approval before we signed this thing, so...
Do we need a motion to end that? Okay, we need a motion to add the user license. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Okay. And that's all I have, I guess. Looks like you gotta schedule it, do it after the next council meetings accordingly.
Well, so yours and mine are up on the same month.
Oh, okay.
So usually we just do them after council meetings, but we have both of ours now, so I don't know who wanted one after the other after the council meeting or...
What are you, your performance evaluations?
Yes.
How long do they usually take their seat?
I don't know.
Hours and hours?
Yeah.
That never happens.
I don't know. It depends on what stock and if it's happened and how much you give it wrong, but...
Would it be possible to put one off to the following month, do it after the meeting?
The management?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that'd be fine because our raises are based on...
Because my concern is if we put them, you know, stack them up, we'll be, we could be getting late and start less than...
Yeah.
You know, not give it the time it needs.
Yeah, I don't really see an issue with that.
I don't care, it's up to you.
Well, can we do one before the council meeting and one after? I guess it depends.
I'd really, I, I like your idea because I don't wanna rush and have to wrap up because of...
Council meeting, yeah.
What's your point?
Can you show me how to do that?
Or do you have a P and Z meeting and you can do it afterwards or something or? Don't matter to me, I'm here if you want to get involved.
It's probably just easier if we did one at the end of May and not in June or council meetings. Because then you get into the special meeting thing and...
Well, let's just go with, as they were presented here, reports, we'll do public works in May and we'll do yours in June. Just let the agenda guide the when, if you two don't mind, the when.
Okay. Bruce and Nikki.
That works anyway because I have a conference next month.
Anything else for Bruce?
Mr. Healy, wanna come see what this wastewater and water is all about? Give me a holler and give you a tour.
Thank you and good luck in the upcoming weeks. It's all gonna happen fast.
It's gonna be good.
Yep.
Better fix those pot holders.
Admin Department.
All right, page thirty-seven is the wire usage report. If anyone has any questions, we looked pretty good there. I just put this on here in case, just to kind of bring attention to it if anyone has any ideas for the Staples Motley area community foundation grant. Um, we have a pipeline in the past, it closes on the fifteenth. I mean, that's anywhere from, like, usually around two thousand dollars or something.
Fifteenth of April?
Yeah.
Oh, that's so right at the end of the week.
Is this something, in the past, has it been used for June Fest, for example?
Well, June Fest can apply for themselves.
They can apply for themselves, okay.
Yeah, we've done it, the ice skating rink, we did. And, and actually, yeah, I think June Fest was one.
Last year they awarded three thousand dollars to, to June Fest.
As its own entity, not the city, whose a city can still go after some dollars as well?
Uh, looks like in twenty twenty, we got speed signs for vehicle and pedestrian safety. And, yeah, we did the lighting, you must have had a project in Converse Park too that you had pipeline. Just stuff like that. It's a matching grant, so we have to spend what we get. But, I mean, if, if we had a project or something that we wanted to apply for, I just wanted to bring attention to it. It's twice a year, so it's April and I think October.
October fifteenth is the second, right?
Bruce, is there anything Parks and Rec wise that comes to mind?
Uh, not at the moment. Looking at favorite projects.
Fair enough. Fire Department?
I can think of...
Equipment or anything? The reason I ask is I have, I'm already in the process of writing one for something. I'm familiar with the grant, I served on the board, I'd be happy to be the guy to write it up. So I did, I helped write there. I know the process.
Yeah, so...
Maybe we should talk afterwards though. But we've talked before about if we have a piece of equipment for in the corner of that part?
Mm-hmm. Yes, okay.
It might be, uh...
He's referring to adding some new equipment to the skate park?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be simple and I can just, I can write that down. I'll, I'll worry about the devices, everything else, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll pursue something on behalf of the Parks and Rec for the city.
Okay.
Good.
And then I just wanted to bring up the administrative accounting hours. Obviously she's been working eight hours four days a week right now and she's reducing her hours this week. But before we did kind of a nine to three-thirty thing. And I was hoping we could do like an eight to three or nine to four kind of thing, depending on what worked for her. It'd be twenty-eight hours a week instead of twenty-six. I just wanted to make sure that was okay. The half an hour thing was kind of weird to me and this would work better for her and me. I don't think anyone has an issue with that.
So essentially you're just adjusting the time she's here?
Yeah, and it would be two extra hours a week.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-six to twenty.
Okay. And then I'd like to attend the Lake of Minnesota City's annual conference in Duluth. It's June twenty-first through twenty-third. Registration fee is two twenty-five for the first time attending. There'll be mileage meals and hotel. And anybody is also welcome to come to this, so if any council want to go, this is a good opportunity to network and take a couple classes.
What's the deadline for that?
Uh, I'm not sure when the deadline is, but it's not until June, so there's some time.
I didn't see a deadline on it. I got a postcard today, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I may have missed it, but I didn't see a deadline on it. You can probably register.
Yeah, I'm sure you can probably register pretty close to the end.
Have either you or Steve, have you gone to it in the past?
I have not.
I did a long time ago.
Was it beneficial?
Mm-hmm.
I've heard very good things about it, so I've obviously never been, but...
I'd make a motion to just allow those who want or need to attend the conference to be able to do so.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
And then just a reminder that I'm going to the MMCI, the Institute, um, May eighth through the twelfth, which actually follows the next council meeting. So I probably won't be here for the next council meeting. I would drive back, but it's, they've got stuff going on that night too and, yeah. Um, so just a reminder, I'll be gone that week. And then on page forty, there's some training opportunities. I already mentioned the Lake of Minnesota City's one. And then there's a free managing difficult conversations with colleagues and constituents workshop. So if anyone wanted to go to that...
Do we have to register for that, Darcy?
Yeah.
So do we let you know?
Yep.
Okay, I, I wanna go to that one.
Okay.
I'm gonna put my name on there too.
Okay, so Brendan and Pat, I will sign you two up. And then, yeah, if anyone else wants to, you can let me know later on. And, yeah, and then you already said my review would be ended June council meeting.
Anything else for Darcy?
Oh, and I just wanted to mention Tyler from Morrison, or not Tyler, Zach from Morrison County Record is done. He was done last week, so we'll be getting a new person sometime soon, hopefully. He just wanted me to let you guys know and thank you guys for everything.
You're very welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing spring.
Yeah, no problem.
You left and the winter just stuck around. We got to have you back. Any old business? Hearing none, moving on to new business. Ordinance number two oh three, fees for emergency protection and fire services.
Those ordinance just need to be updated. I sent it to somebody and noticed that we were missing some things like the emergency fee didn't have the first four hundred dollars and only had two hundred dollars. So that and then I updated some wording. It's all in red.
In a motion to approve the updates changes on ordinance number two oh three?
Can I ask some questions?
Sure. Yep.
Um, so going back to your report, so when you have these fire calls in Becker Township and, uh, Motley Township, so then you charge them when you go out there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And these fees, have we compared them to other cities, what they charge? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, I'm not sure. The last time I re-looked at it. Something we can look at.
I, I just know through my job, when I see some of these fees come in for fires and accidents and whatnot on the liability side, they, these seem small, that's why I ask.
We can look, I can look into it and see what other cities ask around and we can always come back and adjust it again.
Is it...
I don't think they've been adjusted since I've been here, but I, I don't know. I don't know where those numbers came from.
Like I said, when I, when I look at these numbers and what I see come across my desk for claims, I just, I think they're on the low side. But if it's a timely manner, I mean, that we have to approve this, otherwise...
I would just like to get this approved to make sure we're all good.
You can charge.
I mean, the fee schedule has these fees and everything, it's more just a...
And if it comes out, we're gonna adjust it later.
Yeah, we can always bring it back.
Do the homework, get different answers and adjust later.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good with that. I was just curious. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made, the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business? Public forum. Council forum.
Yeah, I have one. I would like to let everybody know that Nikki Birga was nominated for the Elite Circle. Top, top seven, I know you'd say that.
Off record.
Top seven percent of the sales for all of Edina Realty.
Thanks, Steve.
Congratulations.
Congrats. Have a good rest.
And you're sitting right here with us.